I think we're still debating the changes on the agenda.
Debate that I put forward, the proposed agenda, and we're debating.
Yeah.
That was.
Oh, that was voted on, you're right.
So why are we, shouldn't we be going right to public comment if we've approved the agenda?
It was.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Where should, shouldn't we go along to the public comment if we approve the agenda as I proposed it?
We did not approve the agenda.
But this was last thing.
We are discussing.
Alright.
It was not.
Okay. So Bob has a motion to approve the agenda as he amended it, which was to add, that's where we got sidetracked because I, he was explaining to me what he was, just for clarification purposes. So we're gonna remove the motion for closed session, motion for open session. We're going to add in, uh, public comment at the end of the meeting, and then we're going to do, um, to replace the motions, we were going to add in either new business or...
Not correct. I, I made, right after we're done approving the agenda, then we go right to the public comment period. After the first public comment period, then we go into the, all the, our title of business today is to address the specific grievances, at which time, somebody can motion to go into closed session at that time, and we will vote at that time.
Okay.
After that's done, then we have a final public comment.
The way I understood your, was incorrect then, so. I understood, because that's why I clarified at the end, is that everything else remains the same, and you said yes, that's why I clarified, but if, if you were, if you meant for your, your vote or your, uh, motion to be that we go into public comment, that's, you're obviously allowed to clarify that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So then you're seconding that you want public comment now.
You want public comment at the beginning of the meeting? Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
So that it comes in as you go.
So there'll be public comment and then, um, motion?
Alright, so, just, just to clarify.
It should be call to order, pledge allegiance, and roll call, he's asking for public comment to go there.
Yeah.
Because this has to be part of the record, so they have a consternation of that.
We're, we're eliminating.
The two motions, okay, and then in the following act, it would be the grievance.
Or the business.
All day business, here, we're here.
Right.
The two motions.
We're eliminating the two motions.
The grievance.
The grievance.
So, so we have the grievance.
And those are only put there for the wording, by the way.
Right.
Not evidence.
So then, after that, if, if we want, if we get to that point, uh, we would then entertain a motion to go into open and closed session after that.
Okay, alright.
That way we have that clarified for the record, clarified for these rapport, for that, this updated agenda can be attached to these, uh, to the grievance.
And the public comment, I guess.
And then, uh, public comment again.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. We do have to vote on whether to accept this, or whether to approve this motion, so. Bob made the motion, Dan seconded, is everyone clear on the motion? What we're voted for, a yes vote would be the amended agenda as we just outlined. Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, okay. Public comment.
Aye.
Well, hold on, let me, I'm gonna set my, we, we are limited to two minutes since.
Two minutes?
And, well, I just need to set my timer so that I'm fair with everybody.
Okay. I'm gonna do something really controversial, I'm worried about doing this. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I know there's cameras here, so I want you to understand, and Betsy, you're really worried about this.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you can just stand right where you are, that's.
I want to point out that Bob Turick has now delayed this minute, uh, meeting by more than thirty minutes. Does that show his support for your responsibilities as a board? I have gone through the video tapes, and I have seen time and time again now.
Betsy.
Yeah, you get, you get.
In the middle, you're just addressing.
No, you addressed.
Uh, I've seen, I've gone through the video time and time again, see repeatedly delaying this meeting. Doris, I, I have no idea what the problem is regarding your contributions. Uh, it is a frightening thing to work on, but I also asked Dr. Turick if he was responsible for Alcona Conservatives, I think that's what it is, and he said, no, absolutely not. I found eighty-one postings from him on that site, oddly enough, nothing to do with this issue. He says it's put on by friends of his. I just want you to weigh that, in terms of what is his commitment to this board. Thank you, Mike, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Doing this job.
Yeah, correct.
Hey, just a question, was, uh, was the county board the liaison on the fight of the meeting?
I do not believe so, I, I, because it was still in the, the initial internal investigation. We wanted to bring everyone up to speed, but then we were going to, uh, talk as a group of how we wanted to proceed. And no decision can be made in a closed, it was just, wanted to discuss grievance as part of our policy. So it's not a policy to the board and to evolve, to communicate if it does escalate, so this is still in the internal matter, this is not a public matter, this is still in the internal matter.
Yeah, I didn't hear you, so I was wondering whether, uh, can I finish over?
Yeah, you still have a minute.
So I'll just, or directly, this is a citizen, not a commissioner, um, I would only ask, and Lenny, I've been a friend of mine, but I would ask that, I believe there's only one employee in the room, and that you can't, you can't reference anybody, whichever side has a circus or anything else that could be considered somewhat the meeting, so I would ask of the board, just make sure that we don't have that by your place.
Thank you, Greg. Any others? Yeah.
Basically, the same thing he said, that, uh, I find it revolting that you're considering the people here who are watching what you people are doing, and we are being called a circus. I find it appalling, we're not a circus. We are watching what you people do and how you do it, and all we ask it is be done the right way. We're not the circus. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we didn't get your name.
Jim Swinski.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Uh, I was not referencing the people at the circus, I said the meeting comes into a circus, it was the actual evolving of the meeting, is what I was speaking of.
But you were speaking, you were speaking to us, Lenny did it twice to us. Lenny did it twice to us.
Okay, thank you.
Are you not gonna apologize?
I didn't address, I didn't address the people as that. Uh, Judy, you had your hand up first, I'd like.
Um, I just, uh, Judy French first, though. I have been around the senior center my entire life, um, and so has my, my mom, Dolores is my mom, for any of you that don't know, um, if you wanna look at somebody who's dedicated to the senior center and volunteers their time more than anybody at this table, it's that woman right there.
Amen.
Okay. People like have a family function to come down here and hand out boxes of food.
I don't disagree with you.
Her dedication to this senior center is far beyond any of you at this table, and anyone else in this community. As far as the other board members, I know, like, Roland and Stan put in a lot of hours also, um, I do wanna point out that, you know, she comes down here and signs checks, it's her job to question and not sign blank, you know, it's her job as a board member. My understanding is that Mr. Turick came down, he looked at one bill and saved the organization three hundred dollars a month, maybe he should look at more bills.
Thank you, Judy. I would like to, to comment that none of the details of these grievances have been released to the public or to anyone else, so I'm not really sure how you found that out, um, I'm not saying whether it's true or not true, but, um, none of the details have been released to the public. Uh, Gary was next, I'm sorry.
Gary, Vanoverville Township, uh, two things, number one, uh, I used to be the chairman of the Alcona County Grassroots Conservatives, Dr. Turick and his wife have not been part of that group, uh, the conservative news is a whole different function from what we used to do, and we are kinda suspended right now, and the number two thing, and I'm not asking you to comment back, but I guess something I don't understand, if the grievance committee met with Dolores, when Dr. Turick was being investigated, why didn't, wasn't she on the committee then, because at that point, I think that would have been her function, and that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Exactly.
Uh, yes.
Hi, Pamela Pennon, Lincoln and Spruce, I'd like to clarify the fact that due to what was printed in our, one of our local newspaper, we are not witches, because we're concerned citizens, does not make us witches. We don't walk around with forks and et cetera. Number two, we are not racist, as I was accused of being, as other people in the local Spruce Township meeting. That's all I got to say for right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Anyone else?
Right here.
Yes.
Rich Ray Harrisville, um, understanding that this is the debate between a personnel issue or a non-personnel issue, because the board members are not employees, this would then be a code of, code of ethics violation that you're dealing with, um, I do have the bylaws, please follow them as you do them today, and in your meeting seventy-two hours of minimum away from now, they are still allowed to vote until such time as they are removed from the board, which requires two-thirds of a vote for you to dismiss them or punish them. Thank you very much.
Let him go first.
No, he said you, so you get to go first.
Terry Goldstrom, Lincoln, um, I think the delay has been because we're not following Robert's rules, if I'm correct, so if we followed Robert's rules, this would move along quicker, just saying.
Uh, Rick Hazel, Haynes Township, um, all I wanna say is, as far as, is that there's nothing wrong with people questioning how you going about things, okay, that's my idea, I don't like this stuff, but you know what, when you look and you see changing stories, monies that don't add up, things that are being done behind the scenes, as concerned citizens, as part of this comp, this company we like, we love, we just wanna say, hey, what's going on, and I think the action of people who are saying no, like Dr. Turick and, and other people on the board, is saying, listen, this is the way it should be done, let's question it, let's see how we can straighten it out, and let move forward, but we just can't keep going, I just think it's concerned citizens wanting to know, how come there's this fuzziness, there's this deception, this changing stories, these monies that aren't there, I, I think we just need answers, and I think an open policy is what we need.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes.
Karen Charbonneau, first and foremost, Bob and Dolores have done a great job. They're taking care of how things should be done for seniors here, more so than any other board member has in the past, and I thank God for them, and I pray tell that people will, when they hear the truth, things are gonna change, so I'm praying for you, God's will be done in all of this, truth come forward, and you can make your decisions honestly, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. You can certainly tell you two are related, you look, I mean, now, are you sisters-in-law or sisters?
Sister-in-law.
It's amazing how much you look alike, to me, I was like, they're sisters. Yeah, okay, any other comment? Any other comment? Alrighty. Thank you, and we will have a second session at the end of the meeting, two minutes allowed, again, each. Okay, so the only order of business on today's, um, agenda then would be the, um, grievance, internal grievances and, um, grievance report, or the, yeah, I guess that's. Wait. Yeah.
So, um, basically, based on all of the information that was provided to the grievance committee, it is the grievance committee's recommendation that there is, um, too many grievances, it is too volatile, there is too many motions, and we are recommending the use of RECON, which is an organization that would be external and would do a complete and total investigation, and then make the recommendation to the lawyer, and the lawyer would then disseminate all that information to the board.
Now, I'm just, I'm looking for the information right now that was sent to me as far as cost, because I wanna get it exactly right, does anybody have that ready through fingertips, I know it's in my folder.
I don't think that, um, we could, we couldn't send it to me.
They had it probably get sent to me, then.
Is there a copy of these findings for our board members?
Um, I can, we can certainly make copies of all of the grievance letters that were sent.
I was told that it was sent to us by, I think, nothing.
Um, it was, well, I know it was sent to the grievance committee members, um, we have copies of the grievance letters.
No, because that wasn't the subject of this meeting, the subject of this meeting was to, uh, to work with.
Right, not to air the grievance, not to get through.
I would like to see a copy of any and all letters before we proceed any further.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
As we are.
And I will go ahead and say that I moved that we stopped the meeting, and we will carry the paper back up on Tuesday at our.
No, we're gonna keep going, we're gonna continue the date, if, if somebody sent a letter, they should be available.
They are, so how long are we gonna sit here?
Take two minutes, go downstairs, or we're gonna.
The winner should have been at this board meeting already.
Amen.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we need to stop with cross-talk, everyone.
Are we, are we, the motion has not been made, we're, we're just discussing.
We're discussing the.
Well, we asked. Where, how to proceed.
The, well, the grievance committee chair gave a report.
The motion has been made, we're discussing.
And has made the recommendation.
To, to refer this.
To out.
Right.
Can I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
According, special meetings are supposed to be special, they're supposed to be, they're called only if something important comes up that must be dealt with before the next regular meeting, that must be dealt with. If we're, the recommendation is to refer this out to another committee, how did this meet the qualification to be a special meeting, why couldn't this have been taken up at our next meeting, which is less than five days from now?
I felt that it was an issue that was deep enough that we wanted to get it handled before the next board meeting, so that we could have that kind of behind us and know where we're at, that was my feeling as chair, and I have the right to call a special meeting.
Point of work. I would like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, President Turick recuse himself because of extreme prejudice. You want me to go on?
Sure.
When, uh, Director Turick and myself were elected to this board, before we were seated, President Turick was going around speaking against us that there were two troublemakers elected to the board, and that he might possibly have to bring a gun to the meeting, I call that extreme prejudice.
Amen.
Amen.
So I ask for your recusal in all these matters.
Well, I don't get a vote in these matters unless there's a topic, so.
No, but with the grievance board, you have input, in this meeting, you have input, I'm asking for your recusal. I'll make a motion.
Hold on. You brought me up by name, I have apologized to you for those comments, but you made them, I did make them, I did make them, because I felt threatened, and I'm not gonna go into why I felt threatened, but that's not for the public to, to know, I made that comment, I apologized to you, we were out of meeting.
You made those comments too, public.
That comment, I didn't say why I felt threatened, nobody in this room or in this public knows. There's only two people that know that.
The public of this organization knows it.
Well, no, I never knew it.
Employees that were present at the time that heard it.
I think if a motion's been made, I could second his motion, and then we can continue on with the discussion of the motion, if anything we need to discuss, so I would second his motion.
Well, he didn't finish his motion, so, so you're seconding nothing, so let's let him finish his motion.
My motion is that this board direct the president to recuse himself from this and any and all meetings concerning Dr. Turick.
I would second that motion. I'd like to discuss, I would take one for ten.
Hold on, let me get the timer.
Yeah, let's, let's get the timer, I do believe, once you're ready, I'll speak.
Could you speak up, please?
I will, please, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I do believe that it was the recommendation of the grievance committee to have a third party investigate, therefore, the director's motion would be made moot, because he is removing himself from the situation, so instead of performance, profugication, for the betterment of ACCOAs as a group, I believe that we should have a policy that the kids don't see mommy and daddy for. There are certain things that we can spiritually debate, there are, I, I have my ten minutes, please, one more, thank you.
Was that a disparage remark?
That is not a disparage.
Point of order.
You are out of order.
Point of order.
Point of order.
You may call a point of order.
No one has said anyone's name.
He didn't call you mommy and daddy, he didn't call that mommy and daddy, it was an analogy that we don't, mommy and daddy don't quite tell the kids, that was the point, we shouldn't be, we should be a board that is professional and unified, we don't have to all agree, certainly not, but that was his point, you may continue.
Please, I, I requested my time be added back, uh, so, as I was saying, it is important for us as ACCOAs to conduct our business in a professional manner, and as such, I do believe the recommendation that is set forth clearly speaks to the motion that is currently on the table, so if the recommendation is that an independent party comes in and reviews everything, we could have been done, dusted, you could have had your say, you could have been interviewed, everything could have been talked about, you could say, talk to this person, talk to that person, because an independent person would be going here, it's not the board is making any recommendations, it's not the board that's conducting an investigation, it's an independent party, so then, I don't understand the motion, I don't understand that we have this conflict, and I do believe that it's important to maintain a system of integrity, you don't have to like anyone here, but we do have to work together for the betterment of this community, and do so professionally. I do not understand, I don't understand it. It has, has devolved into mudsling. So please, let's restore some decency and order and courteousness as we work together through potential grievances, through potential problems, through solutions, because this is why you're here. You're here not to vote, push forth an agenda, you're here to work together. And yes, spirited debate can happen, people can choose to disagree, that's okay, we work best when we work together, that's, as a principle that I think we all can stand by, not just as humans, but Americans, people who live in this county, we may have differing views, we may have different beliefs, but at the end of the day, I can respect your opinion, because I can respect you as a human being. So that's what I'm asking, for us to recognize that when things are presented, don't object out of hand because of the person, evaluate the merit, not because, well, she said it, I don't want it. That puts people in bunkers, that doesn't build bridges, that destroys organizations, that destroys marriages, that destroys friendships, we have to get back to working together, time check, please?
Five minutes.
So, I ask that as we continue to talk about these things, as we continue to work through our disagreements, as we continue to evaluate what we each feel is best for ACCOAs, that we will remember these things, because despite popular opinion, I don't hate anyone here on the board, despite popular opinion, I do have love and affection for everyone else, you don't have to support them, you don't have to, you have to like my decisions, but I would ask for decency and respect and common courtesy, especially from those who profess to be believers, who share the same faith that I share. Love one another, just as I have loved you, don't have to like me, but respect, don't have to like us, but respect that we are trying to do our best, we're human, we're followed. We put in safeguards so that we don't make the mistakes that are detrimental to the agency, staff have voices, and we have policies and procedures that we go through to ensure that their voices are heard, just like we have voices to clients, we have policies and procedures. The grievance committee has made a recommendation that our current policies and procedures and the current climate, as we see today, would not come to a rational decision, because everyone is in their emotional mind. And if we remove emotions from the decision, if we remove emotions, then we're able to have a clear decision each.
Time check, please. Two minutes, fifty-four seconds, Dolores, you'll be recognized next, when Lenny is done, so you don't have to re-ake your arm over there, Lenny, are you done?
Oh, no, I said I would take my full ten, okay. So, three years ago, I was brought in to this organization, this organization struggled, back in twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen, and before I took over in twenty nineteen, we had to cancel services. We had no policies and procedures in place to address grievances, we had no policies and procedures in place to address employee concerns, that I'm proud of, has changed, that we are successful, we're successful in providing services, we're successful in, in working with our staff, we're successful in having people that are engaged in this process. I welcome talking. I welcome talk. I welcome opportunity to sit down and converse. Somebody picked up the phone the other day and asked, hey, can I talk to you for a minute? Absolutely. We're approachable. But it is the board's responsibility as a member of the board that when things are of concern, that they address it in a timely manner. And it should not be a handcuff to be and provide common decency to employees who have agreements. So my final thought on this is that do what's best for ACCOAs. Not what's best, what looks good, what is right, what is, might be justifiable, because those ways may consider and it may be right, but in the way, it would be destructive. Please make decisions based on what's best for ACCOAs, not an agenda, not because of anything other than what is best for ACCOAs and its staff, its employees, its volunteers.
Ten seconds.
Thank you, I'll give you the rest of my time.
Thank you. Before I recognize Dolores, I saw some confused looks when we were talking about times up here. The board members all have ten minutes each to debate, not two minutes, it's the public comment, just two minutes, just so that everyone's aware.
Is he a board member?
And then, yes. And then af- after every board member who wishes to use their ten minutes speaks, then each board member gets another ten minutes, just so that you're aware.
My question is, is he a board member?
No.
But he's also part of the debate.
No.
But he's not a board member and it's all board members.
That's right.
You're out of order.
Sorry.
Dolores, you have ten minutes.
Well, first of all, Lenny, you were not here in twenty nineteen, you were hired January the second of twenty twenty was your start date. But when you talk about building bridges, don't tear these bridges down, we got to build them, then why on earth would you encourage your staff to write letters condemning me? And why just yesterday would you sit at the table at lunchtime and condemn me and encourage your staff to do the same thing? Listen to them, oh, well, she did that, oh, yeah, she, well, write a letter to the board. And well, I, I want to get to the point that we're here. Where is this letter, these letters, whatever, you have? Why haven't I seen them? If this is about me and Dr. Turk, where is the letter that you say you have? I want them in black and white, I want them on a piece of paper, I don't want text messages. I want to see what you have that's supposedly condemning me. A grievance letter against me and why wasn't I informed of your grievance made, made? Maybe it was about me, I still should have been informed about it. I think everybody has heard Dr. Dr. Phil say, I don't care how flat you make a pancake, it's got two sides. So you got all this information and you listened to this side? Did you even, did anybody?
Point of order?
On the grievance board?
Cleaning the table without recess? Lenny, could you go make copies of the, of the letters, please? Thank you. That's important, it's only important.
So apparently the grievance board had to have a copy of these letters, right? If they exist?
Yes.
So why wasn't I given a copy of them before? Why, why wait till now to get them?
The board is a.
I don't think she's, I think she's asking in return, but I'd like to let her talk.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I've got a lot I want to bring up when we get to, is this an open meeting now? Is this where we're here to discuss?
Well, right, right now, we're actually supposedly discussing the, the motion that Leroy has and we let it go down a rabbit, I let it go down a rabbit hole.
Yep. Well, first of all, I want to read a job, what the boards.
Hold on, hold on. We need to deal with the motion first, your point of order, even though you didn't say point of order is correct. There is a motion on the floor right now that we started to debate and then it quickly devolved, um, my fault, my bad.
We're discussing.
We are, but we're not discussing, we're not discussing. We're not.
I think the executive director talked about things that were not directly related.
And like I just said, that was my fault, okay?
And I would expect everybody else to be able to speak on it.
If you wanted to go that way, that's fine, but but normally you'd be jumping up and saying, point of order, we have to keep the discussion to the motion at hand.
Well, I would, I have a copy of the, the board's responsibilities. One of the responsibilities is financial management, including adoption and oversight of the annual budget. Another one, become familiar with ACCOAs finances, budget and financial resources. Be alert to community concerns that can be addressed by ACCOAs mission, objectives and programs. These letters, even though I haven't seen them, is complaining that I ask questions. When I come in to sign a check and I have been told by uh the auditors, Stevenson's, if you're going to put your name on a check, you best know who the check is going to, how much and why. So I ask.
Let me help you real quickly, you're down to five minutes, but because we had a side discussion, I'm going to add a minute back to that, so you've got six minutes.
I asked two, a week ago, whatever it was, I was signing checks, a girl's mileage sheet came up, says Green Bush, forty-nine miles. Well, that threw up a red flag, so I thought, I'm going to ask. So I took the mileage sheet, Lenny met me at the door. You got a question, he says? Yes, I said, I do, it says Green Bush, forty-nine miles. That's all it said. So he went, he says, you waited at the table, I'll ask. So he went in, I waited at the table, he came back out and he said she had three clients. Well, I don't care if she had three clients, it's still not forty-nine miles to Green Bush. So pretty soon she came out with the map and said, these are her three clients. So Roland and I retraced the track and it was forty-nine miles, but they had to go way down to Green Bush, then way out to seventy-two, then way back over to Harrisville before coming back here. So yes, I did question that. And then am I signing a check? Amazon check, seven thousand dollars. So I'm looking at some of the receipts. Magic markers, forty-nine dollars, forty-two, I think. Then crams, thirty-two dollars. So yes, I asked Lenny, what's the deal, why are we spending thirty-two dollars on crams when you can go up to the dollar store and get this nice twenty-four pack of crams for a dollar and a quarter? His comment, well, these are better quality. What six-year-old kid cares about the quality of a cramp and coloring? It is my responsibility as a board member, signing that check, it's my responsibility to ask questions. And if there's, if there's a check there for twenty thousand or two dollars, if I don't understand it, I'm going to ask. And I'll, I'll finish more later. I have, I do have more things. But right now I want to see those letters. And I want to see the minutes from the uh, the meeting they had, the grievance committee meeting. Because you have to take minutes, so I want to see them also.
I believe Will took two minutes and he's on vacation and he has not sent them out.
Well, I want to see those minutes.
Well, he hasn't sent them out, so I can't show them to you right now. You still have three minutes if you want to use it.
I'll, I'll wait, do my three minutes later.
Well, you got another ten, so, when, when we go the second round. Anybody else?
So we need a small recess.
Oh, I guess we need a recess?
Yep.
Lenny, you're going to go write a letter? This is a joke.
Do we need, what do we need a recess for?
You're the sheriff.
All right, we don't need, that's enough.
That's right.
What? What do we need a recess for?
Because I am tending to the business of ACCOAs.
Pardon?
I am tending to the business of ACCOAs.
Okay.
The school just closed, I have to cancel meals for the afternoon route, I need a recess. So please, can I respectfully have a recess?
Yes, how long?
I need about
Yes.
Excuse me, I need about five minutes. I also need to uh let you know, because you guys have the copies of the letters, those that, that was not.
Right, I can bring them down, too.
So that's something that you guys need to talk to. But again, just need a, a quick five-minute recess to update you what's going on.
Okay, we stand in recess.
Plenty of stand.